We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, June the 12th, 2025. We have already had our invocation and Pledge Allegions at our special called City Council Meeting, and so I will go over the protocol, uh, agenda items for the meeting, and then we'll get into the meeting of the meeting. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council. I'm the Mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only, and no official action will be taken this evening. Official action will be taken on these items discussed tonight on Monday at our normal voting meeting at 6:00 PM. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda items, comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. There are just a few protocol items I'd like to go over with all of us, and then we'll get into our meeting. I'm ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the Chair if you deviate from this requirement in your speech, a second deviation or result, and a request for you to leave the chambers or the room. We're not in the chambers this evening. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud, react to speakers, speak from the audience, cheer, carry on a conversation when you're at the podium. When you're at the podium, please address all of your comments and concerns to myself or the Chairperson that you're speaking with at the time. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during the public required, public hearings, and if you have a cellphone or electronic device, please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. This is how the agenda items will be handled. The committee Chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council, council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us to take the information in and make a determination on next Monday. After that, the committee Chairperson, if it's a public hearing, will ask for comments for those that are in favor of the item. Those individuals get 20 minutes. Those that are in opposition receive 20 minutes as well. So each side gets 20 minutes, and each person has five minutes to speak. But if you have more than four or five people, you have to split up your time, but in totality, each side gets 20 minutes. Prior to approaching the podium, please give you, there are some speaker cards outside, and they're blue cards. You should fill those cards out, put your name and address on the cards, and then we will have that card turned into staff, and they will put your information into the official record. Each person has one opportunity to speak. This is not a question and answer or debate format. We're here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions based on that information. If you have any printed materials, please give that to our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Candace Jackson, and she will make copies and disseminate that information to myself and council members. I believe that is all. There's a lot of talking. Hopefully, we all are on the same page. There are agendas, printed agendas outside, but if you don't want to have a printed agenda and you want a paper one, there are some outside, and then the other agendas are on the screens. So now we'll move on with the meeting. Those are the announcements and presentations. We'll move on to each committee. The first committee is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Coach. We'll move on to Housing and Community Affairs. That's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Housing and Community Affairs Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one item under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, and that is to authorize the Mayor to attend the Kalia Conference during the period of August 8th through the 10th, 2025, in Little Rock, Arkansas, to honor Chief Gary Sparks for the Douglasville Police Department becoming Kalia certified. And our ever-incredible City Manager, Marsha Hampton, will fill us in a little more.
You all know, as a part of your administrative ordinance, you have certain approved training that are just allowed through the administrative ordinance. This is not one of those. So our police department has recently been notified that they will be nationally certified through Kalia. There is a banquet that's a part of that ceremony, so very similar to the Parks and Recreation National Certification. The Mayor is requesting to attend that along with myself and the remainder of the police command staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Manager. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I really appreciate you all's consideration. It will not be anything above and beyond my budget that's allocated for training and travel for me to attend this event, but I would like to support the Chief. I know I missed when we had, the department was Department of the Year in 2023 in Savannah. I don't know if it was a surprise, but I wasn't there because I would have driven there, and he was Chief of the Year. But for you all to get this Kalia certification for the Police Department of Public Safety really shows their dedication to service and being serious about the community, and so they just don't give these out. I know it's been maybe a couple of years or so trying to go through all of the boxes and get the information together to send into the National Office, and they have been cleared to get a national award. It's just like the gold award for the National Parks Association. So I would really appreciate the consideration for me to attend this, and again, it isn't anything above and beyond what's already allocated in my training budget. So thank you so much, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Deputy Chief, do we know what percentage of departments are certified under Kalia?
There's about 950 certified out of 18,000, so.
That'd be five percent.
Four or five percent.
That's pretty, that's pretty, that's a pretty good honor then, I guess. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I just want to say, I think it's fantastic for our department and for our city, and I think it is wonderful that Madam Mayor is willing to go represent all of us there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Coach Watts.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I just was wondering if Deputy Chief could just kind of give us a quick overview of what our police department had to do to receive this.
Yes, sir. So the accreditation process took three years. It started with us reviewing our own policies, procedures, facilities, equipment, training. It then went to a second phase where accreditation managers started to review all those same, same things, and it ended after three years with an onsite, three-day, basically an inspection of our police department. And then continuing forward, every year we have to prove to the Commission that we're still following the procedures, that we don't just have them written down, that we actually do them. We had to submit statistics every year, and then every four years, we had to go before the Commission again and have another onsite inspection of the agency. So it proves that our department really upholds the highest standards of law enforcement, and the Council has given us the opportunity to go through the process and get it done, so it's very important.
Well, just thank you, you and Chief and the rest of the department for all that you all do, and it's a great honor to see y'all recognize this way. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any additional comments? Councilman Miller?
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to say that, I guess, to know what everyone else has said, I'm super proud of our police department. This is an incredible honor, and if you guys are looking for our thoughts on this, I'm very much in support of Madam Mayor going and supporting our police department in this. It's a wonderful achievement. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions, comments? It sounds, I would say this is the gold standard, well, nay, I would say the platinum standard for professionalism in police departments around the country, and it's certainly an absolute honor, not just for the police department, for the entire city of Douglasville that you've brought this to us. So I'm going to guess the sentiment here is to go ahead and put this on the consented.
Please.
Consent agenda for Monday, and we'll move on from there. Madam Mayor, that's all we have in the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you Deputy Chief for giving that, that explanation. We'll move on then to Personnel and Organization Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thanks again, Madam Mayor. We also have no business for the Personnel and Organization Committee tonight.
Okay. Now, I'll write number 10, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have a couple of items this evening. Our first is item number 25-254. Says to consider a request for final replat approval to establish the as-built locations of the townhome building for lots 10 through 16 and lots 171 through 176 of Laurelwood Phase Two for 12.018 acres at 5059 Rosavor Drive and landlots 23 and 24, District One, Section Five, application by FR Arbor Place, and Mr. James Gordon is going to go over this item with us.
Good evening. I'm James Gordon, 6695 Church Street. Laurelwood is located behind Arbor Place Mall off of Chapel Hill Road. This replat is the as-built condition of two of the townhome buildings. One of the buildings has seven units, and the other has six units. One of the buildings is back in the back corner, and this is the one with the six units, and this is what it looks like today. They've finished up, and they're getting their COs as we speak. And it's just another view of the same building. And then the next building is located up near the front of the property, right near the swimming pool. This is the rear look of that building with the single-car garage, and then this is the front of that particular building. There are still a few buildings remaining on that property to be built. There's two back in that same corner, and then there's also one more right near the main office, and then there's five over near the clubhouse.
So about eight in total?
Yes, yes. So there's still more buildings.
Okay. Have we had any issues with this development at all?
No, they've been passing all their COs well and swiftly.
Wonderful. I know when I went by, it looks great. They seem to be selling really well at a good price point for the community. Seems to be a good product.
Correct, correct.
Council, do you guys have any questions or thoughts on this? May I approach him?
Thank you, Madam Chief. I always got, got to ask a question that you kind of brought up. Would, do you know how the sales are proceeding right now?
Yeah, they're going well, and they're going swiftly. Each of the buildings, as they're getting the COs, they're moving people directly in. So, so they have begun construction back in the back corner on, on the last two buildings. So those are under construction as we speak, and then they're, they have another building up near the swimming pool that will be closing out soon, and then they have to begin construction on about three or four more buildings.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Gordon, for the presentation. These are market rate?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other thing I was going to say is that I was blessed and fortunate enough to attend Councilman Watts Town Hall on Tuesday, and one of the questions was about the mall, and this is near Arbor Place Mall, and so our response, of course, is we don't have jurisdiction over the mall, but what the city does, you know, trying to make the environment healthy so that development will come in the area. And CBL, they owned Arbor Place and Cumberland, and hopefully by getting development and housing around that area, it will help spur some of the upgrades in reinventing the mall the way it currently is, because we know big box malls are closing all over the country. So, but this was, this is exciting to hear that they're selling and that, you know, we have other phases, and again, hopefully it'll spur other things around the mall. So that was one of the concerns that they asked at the meeting, what's going on with the mall? And so we, the city's just opening, you know, our comprehensive plan to help with residential, office, institutional, commercial, everything, to try to build the atmosphere for people to come and develop and redevelop in the area. So, thanks so much. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. And, well, we can get some information for you on this later because I'm not sure where the dates are and where the whole timeframe is, but there is a study underway right now to find out what we can do to help kind of revitalize that area around the mall within our reach, within the things that we can actually do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, I just came in. How many?
Hi.
Thank you. How many units total for both Phase One and Two? Phase One and Two?
Uh, I would have to get that information to get the exact number, but there was a, but there was approximately about 75 to 100, and then the other phase, I think, was about 200 on.
So it's just two phases?
Yes, there's two phases.
Okay. I didn't think it went over 300. Also, and I know we may have discussed this earlier with the developer, and this has been a while back, but the traffic on Chapel Hill, the congestion, and then adding additional, then you have Stewart Parkway, is it not Stewart Parkway, Stuart Mill, that new development that's coming there. Do we have any, it's under transportation, maybe not the right time to ask, but since you're here, and I guess this goes to Mayor Pro Tem, have you looked at Mayor Pro Tem, like the, the volume that's coming out? I don't see in my mind, just, I know the intersection where the car wash is and QT, that's, that's really heavy right there.
That's, you're talking about the intersection of Douglas and Chapel Hill. It's always been busy right there. My biggest concern when this development first came about was the original site plan had only one way in and out, which would have dumped you onto the mall access road right next to Chapel Hill, and that would have been even, that would have been even worse problem because I, I deal with that traffic because I have used that storage facility there that's next to this.
Right on the corner.
So I can tell you from personal experience that, you know, the traffic's not good on it, but having the second relief exit out of that development has definitely made a difference.
Where's the, the second exit out?
Down, down, closer to the mall, right near the traffic circle.
Okay. So they still enter out of the mall or either go the other way?
So they, there's two, there are two ways in and out of that development. So I think without that, it would have been absolutely nightmarish at Chapel Hill.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that.
Madam Chair, I apologize.
Madam Mayor, you had another question?
Just a response, if you don't mind, to Dr. Bert Danley. So, it just so happens, Dr. Bert Danley, before I went into the meeting, the town hall meeting with Coach Watts, that I did ask Madam Chair about our shared streets, and she called the Transportation Director for Douglas County, and I reported this at Mr. Watts's Town Hall, that those shared streets of Chapel Hill, Douglas Boulevard, Chicago Boulevard, there were five or six, and so the county did apply for federal funding for Chapel Hill and Highway Five and Douglas Boulevard, and they were denied federal funding because of limited funds at the federal level. So they do have it on their list, but they don't have the money right now. It's, they're supposed to resurface 30 to 40 miles, and they only have six to eight miles in their funding source right now for transportation. So they're going back to the drawing board, and they're trying to get some, and Stuart Mill was one of the streets that is on the list to be taken care of, but they have done an evaluation, and Chapel Hill does not meet the standard for them to try to resurface it themselves. They are resurfacing from West Chapel Lake, I think is by the high school, all the way to 166, and then, of course, they'll come back into the city as they receive resources from the federal government and their list of priorities for streets. So that's a long answer, but to say that they have applies because it's service delivery, we turn those streets over to the county because we're shared streets, and they get the, to maintain them, and they can't, they don't have the money to just outright do it. They tried to get federal money, so they didn't receive it. It is on the list, but it's not high priority on their list right now.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, it wasn't long to me. Under transportation, that was very appropriate, and thank you so much for asking, Madam Chair, that. And so what I'm hearing you say is Chicago Avenue and down Cape Springs Road, which one side is city, one side is county, then that is on the, on a standstill?
Well, Mr. Sudamon said, the director, he just, we really talked about, because I was trying to get the information for Coach Watts' ward, so we talked about Chapel Hill, Douglas Boulevard, Stewart's Creek, and then he said Highway Five. But I was saying, making the comparison to say all the shared streets are county.
Right.
But they were just saying that those streets did not meet the standard outside of Stewart's Creek, I think, or Stewart's Mill. Do you remember the, the one, what that report I sent to the city manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to respond? You remember, is there anything I didn't say to Dr. Bert Danley?
No, ma'am. You've covered all of those, so anything that's going to require funding above and beyond the special purpose local option sales tax that the county has, they've applied for federal funding, and from my understanding, Mayor, none of those streets will be able to be improved, a disco round.
Riverside Parkway, that was the other one. Yeah, because I did ask about Riverside Parkway because I had just gone to Councilman Watts, I mean, Councilman Estes's Town Hall last Thursday, and I asked him about the potholes on Riverside Parkway and about the signage, and they said that they didn't have the money for resurfacing, but they would do the potholes again. And he said there was something about signage that they couldn't put all the no parking signs up because it was some kind of law or something that people get confused with too many signs, because I told him the chief put signs up and they took them down. They did take our signs down.
Yes, they did.
And so he said, well, we put signs up. I said, well, the chief said he's going to put some more signs back up, and he said, we're probably going to take them down. But anyway, that's a whole nother conversation.
Well, that's a conversation that I, as Transportation Chair, to speak, sit with Chief Sparks, because the amount of accidents and 18-wheelers that go down Riverside Parkway, people have been killed. In fact, one of my dear friends lost her daughter on Riverside Parkway. Fortunately, her son still lived, but he was in the backseat when she died.
That's horrible.
So, and I, and I hear city managers stating that federal funding right now, it is, everything's, not everything, but it's a standstill. So just even looking at federal funds right now is, there's a lot of transition going on, but we still have an agreement for service delivery, and we still pay service delivery.
Right.
So I'd like to know, what is the, what is their backup? We pay for that.
Well, he did say, Mr. Sudamon did say for us to put in writing exactly where we need it on Chapel Hill, and that they would try to push that up the, the list, but they did an evaluation on the street, and it doesn't hit the marker for it to be resurfaced at this time. It's not in disrepair enough to do the whole street.
Yeah, it may not hit the marker now. I give it what, give it just a little bit more time, it's going to hit the market before we go back into service delivery. So even if they don't, it doesn't hit the market, what is the plan? Because I just, I mean, I'm not saying it to you, but.
I understand.
Questions that we can ask. So I will, I'll get with the Transportation Chair.
Yeah, so maybe we can have a meeting.
Yes, and then go from that direction, because it's always going to be, we don't have, and we don't have, but we pay.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I'll get with them. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I know that was a long answer that was noodled into something else.
Very good.
It sounds like we might need to kind of go back and have a transportation update at a later meeting. Let's see if we can get some information.
Invite the Transportation Chair to one of our committee meetings in the near future. But I'll get with them.
I think that would be really beneficial. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, back to the task at hand, which is Laurelwood. Do you guys have questions regarding Laurelwood? I feel like this is, has been a good development. Are you guys good with placing this on the consent agenda? Yes, I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Our next item is item 25-255. Says, consider a request for a revised final plat approval for Silverman Phase Four to split the existing two tracts into three tracts on 49.33 acres at 7,600 Wood Run, I'm sorry, Wood Road and Landlot 162, District Two, Section Five, parcel ID 0001, application by SL Douglas Place Two. Mr. James Gordon is going to go over this item with us as well. Application by S.L. Douglas Place Two. Mr. James Gordon is going to go over this item with us as well.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
You have to wave your hand, Mr. Gordon.
Silverman Phase. Silverman Phase Four.
Presentation.
Is, is located off of Bright Star Connector, right near the Roundabout. Wood Road is one of the branches off of that Roundabout on Bright Star Connector. And there is presently a warehouse on that site. This is seventy-six hundred Wood Road, and Bright Star Logistics Center is the warehouse. It's, uh, presently zone light industrial. The property, again, right now, it's, the warehouse is on a large piece of property. And there's a smaller piece of property right, right adjacent to Bright Star Connector. It's just a clump of trees. What the developer is proposing to do, it's presently split, but they need to change the alignment of the property line. So they're gonna make it pretty much parallel to the existing asphalt that they put in places. It just wasn't parallel to the parking lot when they built it. And then also, there's a creek that runs on the northern edge of the property. And they're going to split the property again along that creek. And that'll allow a, a third track of li- land off of Gurley Road where you'll enter off of Highway Five, right across from the Douglas County High School Arena. And this is what the vacant property looks like. It's right across from the arena.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. And I know we've already looked over this track of land with you and made sure that everything's in place. It's, there's no issues to be seen with this. There would be access to all three parcels
Yes.
from the street. Council, do you guys have questions about this item? Madam Mayor?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chairman, uh, Chairwoman. Mr. Gordon, would this, um, alert anything for WSA? Would this impervious surface, who you were talking about, is something adjusting to the concrete and, um, a creek that they're gonna cross, would that, would that alert or just have anything changed as far as the requirements for Water and Sew Authority?
Right. When they, when they put in for a development plan up on that third track, up there off of Gurley, they do have shown where the, um, setbacks and all that, the stream setbacks that they have to obey. So they do have that on their drawings already. So they're aware how much land they can actually build on.
Okay.
Now, the bottom half of it, that number two, that section is, 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 um, that's not in a, like a floodplain or anything. That's just wooded.
Okay, so it's the buffer.
Correct, correct. That one is just wooded.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Right now, they're just dividing it.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's no, no, the, yeah, no development on the table as of yet.
Council, are you guys all comfortable with placing this on the consent agenda? Great. I appreciate that. Mr. Gordon, thank you so very much. Madam Mayor, that is all that we have this evening for planning and development.
Thank you so much. Um, Councilmember Miller in. The next committee is yours as well, Public Improvement and Beautification Committee.
Yes, ma'am, and we have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you so much. Uh, Public Relations, Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business, I just have, thank you.
You're welcome, Councilman Davis. Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor, under public safety.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Recreation, Culture, and Tourism, uh, Councilmember Chris Watts.
We have nothing under, uh, Recreation, Culture, and Tourism tonight.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, would you please take the Technology Committee?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there's no business at this time under the Technology Committee.
Thank you, sir. Transportation Committee, uh, Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
No, um, business tonight under transportation. That's on the agenda, but I would like to, um, just ask a question. And do I, we have a code enforcement person, just a concern in regards to going up Ninety-two South. There's a huge tree that, if you, when you leave here, if you go up Ninety-two South, right before you get to the, um, tracks, probably a little, you know, that little strip is on the right. There's a huge tree that is land, is not just hanging over the top. So, um, it looks like the, the roots of the tree is in, um, someone's yard. So how do we, how do we, uh, 'cause it's also in the right of way of the city. How do we address that?
If it's in the right of way, Ms. Burdad is here. She's taking note. If you have to address, we'll go verify.
Right. And then also, um, I noticed, like, in some of our cul-de-sacs, um, I can't speak for any other, uh, ward, but Ward Three, particularly Davis Drive, um, and then Gordon Heights off of Malone, um, Street. In the cul-de-sacs, it looks like, um, individuals are dumping mattresses. So how often does our maintenance, when they do, if they could, just pay a little bit more attention to the cul-de-sacs? And, and our, we have a, you know, our maintenance guys and I see them, they work very hard. But just, um, I don't know who owns some of the property, but when there are mattresses and things like that that are being dumped, and, and some of them have been there for weeks, and I apologize, I haven't, um, made mention of it, but what is the protocol for that?
We'll remind our sanitation staff that when they're out, that they send that message in. So, Ms. Burdad, she has it.
Okay, perfect. So those are the two areas that I've seen in the cul-de-sacs. So, um, I just asked my colleague, too, when you ride around, especially in Davis Drive, um, look, look there. And I, it's been brought to my attention that, um, there's a homeless population that's beginning to con- um, congregate right there.
Deputy Chief has that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Burdanley. We appreciate that report.
Yes, ma'am.
And of course, um, you know, when the spring comes, we have the opportunity to do our ride-alongs. We used to look forward to that, Mr. Greg, and all of his commentary. And now we have a new, um, public works director, so, um, we can schedule those at any time to ride around, um, each other's wards and, or in the city in general and see, um, just to check on everything to, to make certain that we're looking, have our eyes on all the, um, areas in the city. So, uh, if we can schedule those at any time. I know staff is always prepared and, and ready to help us. Um, do we have any other business that come before council from the elected officials?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, one other thing in regards to dilapidated property. I'm so grateful that we have a judge that's handling that. But, um, there's still some dilapidated property on Conquid Street and up Shaw Mill Road. Those houses have been there for quite some times. And, um, is, do we have on the agenda soon to have an update in regards to, uh, code enforcement and the dilapidated homes? When I think about developers that wanna come to Ward Three and just me driving as a homeowner, driving through some of the communities, when I've seen dilapidated homes that have been there for a long time, that is a very big eyesore.
We had some of that at your Ward, um, Three Town Hall meeting, but we'll share that presentation with you again. Mr. Gray, you still have that information, correct, on the abatement program?
Yeah, so I saw the, I mean, I saw the overview, but I mean specifically, like, um, how we used to get before, like, the specific houses, and I know that wouldn't be discussed in a town hall meeting because of, um, residential property or however we do it, and probably for the sake of time. But I would like to see specifically, like, the, have they been contacted and where we are with that?
Yes, ma'am. We have some of those, so we'll send you every one.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. And if, if there's anything I can do, um, as a ward person here, here, I've been here for a long time, so I know some of the families, and some, some of it may be in air property. But if you need to get in touch with someone quickly, um, if you need some help, just let us know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Burdanley. You're doing it. Um, let me see, any other council members? Thank you so much. I wanted to thank, uh, council members, uh, Mayor Pro Tim and Councilmember Estes, their City Manager and Public Relations for coming out today at the Dog River Reservoir Expansion ribbon cutting. It was really, really nice. It was way back in the, but it's really beautiful. Um, it's an expansion of the river. Uh, there were people there from, uh, EPD, uh, federal, state, and all over, uh, to support Water and Sewer Authority as we're digging, um, the reservoir to expand for water capacity for the community for the next fifty years. So it was really nice, um, and thank you so much for the support of staff coming. Um, and also, um, I did mention to the City Manager, I know she's gonna bring a report to us, but if we all had any ideas about, um, the cancellation of concerts, I've been getting a lot of comments from citizens about, we can't control the weather, but our last two concerts, uh, in our concert series for the spring were canceled. And so one of the recommendations was for us to talk with the school board to see if we can have some kind, some type of MOU, um, if we were to cancel at the amphitheater to go to the Legacy Arena. Um, and there's a lot of logistics with that and concerning that with artists, you know, preparing for amphitheater and sound checks and having to go to the Legacy Arena if it's raining and inclement weather. So not certain. Um, I do know the last two concerts, because we have our fall lineup, we only have three in the spring and three in the fall, that we can't bring those orders, those artists right back in the fall. We have to wait until next spring at least. Excuse me, in twenty-twenty-six, and looking at their schedules as well. But, um, if we just have any ideas that we can help our City Manager, Miss City Manager, I know you look like you wanna say something.
Uh, we have a report coming to you before the fall series on what it would take to logistically do that. So, um, I'm pretty certain Ms. Rosato has reached out to you. So it'll be full and comprehensive.
I know. And then we can tell, we'll have an answer, um, for the citizens to say, I know we're disappointed, but the good thing is we still have our Wednesday wind-down series. We still have other concerts that Community Development has throughout the year, uh, Screen on the Green, Yoga, all kinds of other things, uh, Taste of Douglasville, Chili Cookoff. But I know people really look forward to those concerts, so, uh, we will definitely try to, um, come up with an alternate plan, best we can, because we can't control the weather. But, um, so that's, oh, any other, um, Dr. Burdanley?
Yeah, I would just like to make a comment. It's amazing you would, um, say that, and you're right, nature is, nature and God does all that. I don't know if, the issue too is the rain, but if it's lightning, or if it's lightning, that's a big issue. I was just thinking about, um, you know, like at, um, what is it, Mapleton, they have the cover. Like, there are some, I'm not sure, like, on down the line, phasing in at some point.
Yeah.
Um, just having a cover where you have those seats down at the bottom, um, so that there is a cover. Of course, if it's lots of rain, but like Lakewood Amphitheater, as well as some other theaters, um, around our sister communities, they have that. So we're just wide open, so that might be an idea. We're talking the, the arena, it's like ten thousand, um, seats. So it's very different sitting on the lawn versus, you know, um, just being in the arena. It's that big, like a big concert style.
You're right, 'cause I was there for the Reuben Stuttered, and it looked small because, you know, there weren't ten thousand people there.
Exactly.
So, um, we wouldn't want to have an artist, a national artist come, and it not look like people were supporting that artist when they're coming for thirty-five hundred.
And it's free.
And then it's ten thousand.
Right, and the concert is free.
Yeah.
Right.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I think, um, the Deputy Chief can mention, you know, where we are with weather. One of the things that would say investing financially into the amphitheater, well, I should say the town green, to be a performing arts studio, I think I'll remind you all again, a performing arts venue. We have to just decide what we wanna do. That's what I would say. I mean, the concerts are great. Um, but in following what you all wanted, which was a park that could operate as a venue, um, you just have, I mean, we would just have to decide, you know, where we wanna go. But I think even if we had a cover, the Deputy Chief is gonna address the situation with the weather.
Yeah, even with a cover, it's winds and lightning. The cover's not really gonna, um, take care of that problem. And you have pop-up storms, so you may know five days in advance, there's a twenty percent, thirty percent chance of storms. But you may not find out till the day before that there's gonna be lightning. Uh, sometimes the day of, you'll find out. So it's just a timing issue.
I know. I was standing out on the stage praying that it'd stop raining, but when it's, we can't take a chance with people's lives, the safety with lightning, you know, so we definitely had to postpone and cancel.
Even, even Braves games get rained out, and, uh, they make them up. People come back if they can. I mean, it's just, I mean, that's the kind of venue we, we, uh, we went for. And we're gonna have that happen sometime, then we'll, we'll probably go through a streak where we want anything canceled for the next, you know. It just works that way sometimes. I hate it, but I don't know what to tell.
Councilmember Davis, you have something?
Uh, yes, uh, Maple House and, uh, Wolf Creek, uh, they waited it out. And, uh, a lot of the people that came to, uh, the concerts went all over to Maple House and, uh, Wolf Creeks. Yeah. Yeah, it paid, they paid. It was good.
All right. All right, any other comments? Okay, not having any, then we will go, um, to updates from our city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dodson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our, uh, chief, Deputy Chief from the Police Department, uh, Deputy Chief J.R. Davison.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Um, yes, just to remind you all, we do have two, um, executive session items following this meeting. Also, that your committee meetings for the round of meetings on July third and seventh are canceled. So we will start at six for that round of meetings. There are no committee meetings for July third or July seventh. And then finally, um, state law has changed to allow for city and county managers and administrators to serve on arbitration panels and annexation, um, disputes. So yesterday, um, I was in Gwinnett County at a training. So as of July one, twenty-twenty-six, um, I will be in the pool of panels for arbitrators for, um, annexation disputes.
Congratulations, City Manager.
I don't know if it's congratulations or not. We'll see.
And speaking of that, the City Manager just reminded me, I do have lunch tomorrow with, um, US Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth. So if you all have anything with, uh, anything you would like for me to bring up, please text, text it to me so I can speak with the Congresswoman about that. She's coming to meet with me about my appointment, uh, to GMA's Public Safety, uh, Committee Chair. So, um. So text me and send me anything that I, you all want to talk, for me to talk about, um, with, with Congresswoman Macbeth. All right, thank you, City Manager. Comments from citizens and delegates? If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes to talk to us about anything, remain to the City of Douglasville. It's good to see you, Mr. Osborne, our former City Manager. Please raise your hand. Good to see you, sir. Yes, sir. Good to see you. Okay, we don't have any other business to come, to come before council tonight. We, um, I will open the floor for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss property acquisition and potential litigation. Thank you, Councilman Watts. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. It's been properly moved in second to adjourn into executive session to discuss property acquisition and potential, potential litigation, which is item twenty-five dash two-sixty-three. We don't have any comments or concerns from council? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have, we are adjourned to executive session after a short recess. We are adjourned to executive session.